Welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Study Session. Today is October the 24th, 2022. And we are having a study session today on our construction program and our facilities. And I'm going to turn it over to Michael Braggy.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this opportunity. Welcome. We are going to be doing this presentation in two different phases. So the first opportunity that we have is to provide a presentation to the board. And then after that opportunity, there'll be some question and answers. And then also some Q and A from our community as well. And so we will moderate that as best we can after the presentation. If possible, to hold questions, write questions down. Board members have a copy of the presentation in front of them. And hopefully, we can address those at the end. If we have the opportunity to go through the entire presentation, that would be helpful for us. And we would appreciate that. And we are going to start off with Mr. Guzman, who's going to come up and help us kick off our presentation. Our structure is new and it's different in construction services. And so this is our opportunity for us to introduce you to our new structure, the layered support that we have, and to also meet the team members. Mr. Guzman.
Thank you, Dr. Braggy. I appreciate the introduction. And a good afternoon to our community, our board members, President Wells, Dr. Braggy, our cabinet that's here today. We're very thankful for this opportunity to give an update on our bond program. There's been a lot of work that's been put into this. And of course, with everything, there's challenges that are associated with just gathering data, putting it all in something that's understandable. Our intent is to be able to continuously provide transparent and clear information to our board, to our public, to our staff, and so that the program can continue its momentum. So in regards to our team, we're really excited for the changes. We have our new executive director, Mr. Will Carat, who's here today with us. And he will be helping us with the presentation. And we also have our Fonder Solari team, who's here today as well. And I know there were some questions that were opened up a little earlier to the public. And so we have some of those answers as we go through the presentation. We do ask that you hold your questions. We'll have a Q and A towards the end there for us to be able to review any other pending questions that were not already addressed. We're going to try to address all of those questions that we saw during the presentation. And then we'll have some of that information later on. But if we go to the next slide here. And I would like to bring up Mr. Amin Solari, who's going to be able to present his team. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Before we start, again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present about the findings that we had for the short period of time that we were on the program and the plannings that we did for the future activities related. But I want to ask our team to stand up. The Fonder Solari team is here, everybody. I'm just going to introduce one by one. From the first row, Said Chakiri is our project manager at El Rodeo site. Josue Reyes behind him is our project coordinator at El Rodeo site. Kimberly Emerson is our bond budget coordinator, basically stationed in our program management office. Elliot Mayer, our project manager at B3, B4, or mainly high school projects for now. Joey Jacobs behind is our contract coordinators and procurement specialists for the bond. And Sean Fonder is my partner in the crime and also helping the whole program in the program support, mainly like we're locating the fundings and availability of fundings for the whole program. And of course, myself, I am Amin Solari. And then currently, I'm acting as the program director for the whole program. Thank you, guys. Next slide, please. Sorry. Again, one of the questions, I think, was about our staffing plan. And this staffing plan was in place, I think, like about 20 days after that we came onboard. And that's our chart, the organization chart for managing the program. There are some blank positions. The reason that those positions are blank is mainly cost saving for the district, not because we don't have a person available. For example, like for the oil wells and retaining wall projects, the project is on hold. And we are going to talk about it, that why is on hold during the presentation. And the reason, again, that we don't have anybody assigned to that right now because we just don't want to charge the district for a person that's sitting there and has nothing to do. Also, the main program director, it's very important for us as Fonder Solari to find the right candidate that matches the need of the program. Currently, since we started, I'm acting as that position. And I'm going to assure the board and the community that I'm going to keep acting as that position till we find the right candidate that meets the standards and higher standards that we have to serve you as a school district. So again, this chart was in place, I think, I'm going to say about like 20 days after that we came onboard. All the key personnel are here, working. We have B3, B4 project fully staff, El Rodeo project fully staff. Our program support of the team, everybody is available to us. And again, the open boxes on the chart is because the projects are not actively moving forward right now. I'm going to ask Said, our project manager at El Rodeo, to join us. One of the things that we started doing as we came onboard is technically collaborative decision-making process with all the key members of the district, the school staff. We just want to have everybody involved as part of decision-making process. And we started doing that, and I think we were very successful as we are moving forward. One of the concerns on the program was having a schedule in place that shows the completion date. I'm glad we can tell you that we have a schedule for each one of the projects. And we are working with Pro West, the contractor, to improve them as well. We got the responsibility of managing all the program management, project management, document management as we came onboard. And our goal was to make sure that we are not only slowing, not slowing the projects, just streamlining the process and making them move forward as smooth as possible because, again, we were taking over this program in the middle of the way. Some of the concerns was regarding the critical site utilities at El Rodeo. And I think we were very successful so far moving forward with coordination with the utility agencies. And I'm going to say it to update us a little bit about the status of the site utilities.
Hi, everyone. My name is Said Chakiri. I'm the project manager for El Rodeo. So as far as the site in California, it is soon. The electrical meter is installed and the building is energized. And that's a critical step that we had for this project. As far as the water service, the site pyramid, off-site pyramid for this project is under review by the city. And we have some updates for next couple of weeks on that. As far as the gas meter, I have a meeting with the site planner for this project tomorrow. And we'll have some update on that hopefully by tomorrow. I think that's it.
Again, it was very critical to make sure that we are not letting site utilities delaying the contractor. And that was some of the concerns that contractor brought up when we came onboard and we jumped on it. And we have a solution almost for every one of the key site utilities. And again, as part of, our goal was to collaboratively work with the contractor and design team to streamline process and deal with the structural concerns that we have in the field. One of the last critical CCDs that was related to the dome was approved last week. And I think that's really good for the project. And it's, one of the hair dolls is kind of went away with that approval. And we are moving forward toward the target. I'm going to ask Kimberly to come and help us with the budget.
Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Emerson. I am the budget coordinator for the Fonder Solari team. And we've tried to make the budget as straightforward as we can. The first column are the budget numbers that were in place when we got here. The second column are the budget numbers we're proposing. And the third column shows the difference between those two, particularly the number in light green at the bottom, that we think there's about 1.3 million in this budget that can be recouped and reallocated to different projects.
And Said, if you want to come back and help me with this schedule. As I mentioned, we were able to work with Pro West and we have a schedule in place right now. Our projected completion date for the projects right now is June 30th, 2024. And I think that's right on the target. And that was the contractual completion date for this project. And technically, as this time, we have no delay on this project. But there are structural issues that is still unresolved and may impact the schedule. And we are tracking each one of them. And we are going to assess any possible or potential impact. And as we move forward, the board and the committee would be the first to know because I'm assuming that we are going to have similar meetings as we move forward. And that's going to be reported to everybody. But so far, again, the target date is end of June 2024 to, for final completion on the project. Anything else to add, Said?
No, just we got a couple of issues. One was the dome that we had a CCD for it that got approved last week. And then the other issue was the auditorium. And we currently have a CCD that got disapproved for three times. But the contractor has started work in that area. So we're mitigating the issue right now. So we should be good.
And if we can just explain each one of the photos?
The photo on the left, on the top left corner, is the building C. You can see the dome. Currently, the exterior stock is underway. And this photo is a little bit old, as today is pretty much complete. I would say 95% as far as the exterior stock for building C. The bottom corner, the left corner, is building E. As you can see, the ceiling tiles are installed, the windows are installed. The only major construction that's left is flooring and caseboard. Top corner on the right is building B, the corridor. As you can see, all the plaster, the finished plaster is installed, is applied. We, at today, most of the plaster, finished plaster is applied in the entire building. I would say 90%, 90%. On the left, right corner on the bottom, is the sidewalk that is currently under, under process. I would say most of this, I would say 50% of the sidewalk is complete as today for this project.
Will?
Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks again for having us. We are excited to give this presentation. And before I get into Beverly Hills High School, I just wanted to thank the Fonder Solari team again for putting this together. It took a lot of work and in a short amount of time, they were able to put this presentation together. And I just want to thank them again. It's much appreciated. But thank you all for having us. So one of the first things I wanted to do here is a review of Beverly Hills High School and where we're at. So when I first came here, I didn't quite know what B1, B2 was, B3, B4, and building C and South Site and the Venico site. But what I'm hoping to do with this kind of aerial view of the school site is show you what has been done. So if we can go and look here, building B1 and B2, those two buildings are done already and occupied. Currently, the construction team is working on B3 and B4 down here with this auditorium. And then as we look at the south part of campus, we still have the South Site improvements to go. In the future, building C would be in planning and anticipated to go right here. And then also, the Venico site is also down here on the south side of campus. So I just wanted to start with this slide so we all can get an idea of where we're at and where the buildings are exactly, in case you didn't know the campus too well, like I didn't in the beginning. So Elliot, do you want to come here and talk about B3, B4?
Good afternoon. So what we have here are a couple of floor plans. One is for B3 and the other is B4. This is, this one here that's on the left side is going to be the, your auditorium. This is basically the rough layout of what your flooring or your seating plan is going to end up being. And then over here on the right side of your screen or on your page is going to be the B4 building. You have your first floor, second floor, and then down here in the corner is, or excuse me, your first floor is on the bottom, second floor is on the top. And down here in the bottom corner is your music room. This gives you a pretty good idea of how the furniture is going to be laid out, where we're going to end up fitting in the classrooms, desks, teacher office spaces, things like that.
So also, we wanted to touch on building C and the anticipated plan for building C. There's drawings already drawn up for this building. It will replace Conheim. And, you know, we're in the planning stages here. So we've done a lot of work upfront already, the design team has. And, you know, in future meetings and once we discuss how the future projects are going to roll out, we'll be able to make more decisions on how we proceed with building C.
Okay, so very similar to what we've done with El Rodeo is we're making this, we're opening up, making this a very collaborative decision-making process between the district staff and school staff. We want to make sure we've got clear, open communication and just making sure that everybody is in the loop as quickly as they need to be. As far as the schedule goes, same with, like we've done with El Rodeo. We have received a construction schedule from the contractor. Currently, as of the September update, we are showing no delays. So what that means is by December 31st of 2024, that's our substantial completion date. June 30th of 2025 is our final completion date. One of the, another big thing that we're working to do, and this is between points three, four, and five there, is we're trying to really develop a collaborative atmosphere with the design team and contractor. We're adding manpower to the design team and getting the structural engineer back out on the site. And this is to help streamline the processes that are in place. Things are, paperwork is starting to get bogged down. Or, you know, when we got here, we're trying to get that process flowing. And what that does is help get the project moving where it needs to go. The contractor also has quite a few change orders or what they're calling contingency authorization requests. So it's not a true change order. And what that means is they've got money built into their scopes of work. And that is to allocate or to take care of unforeseen conditions or extra work that's outside of the plans. Where our responsibility is to make sure that that money is just not needlessly spent. There are some times where this work is being done that is part of the scope. The contractor says, no, I don't think so. So we're working through that just to make sure that whatever money is being spent is being done in a diligent and well-thought-out manner. The last two point, or the last two points there, this is regarding the work that was done out on Heath Road. Currently, the school has a water pipe that is going right along the length of Heath Road. We are working between the district and the city to figure out who actually owns that pipe. We had a meeting this last week as far as getting work through that. We did find out that the pipe does meet the city of Beverly Hills standards. So no matter who ends up owning that pipe, we don't have to do any additional work along Heath Road. So that poses a pretty significant cost savings to the district because that work was supposed to happen and now we don't have to do that. And then as far as the rest of that work, we're actually able to complete that on time and on budget. We're supposed to be finishing it within the next week or so. And there are going to be some pretty good cost savings because of changes in phasing and how we're going to be focusing and phasing the work. And this water pipe is a significant cost savings and things like that.
Here we have the breakdown for the Beverly Hills High School B3, B4 and the South Site work, set up the same way that the other spreadsheet was. The first column is the original budget estimate that we had in place when we got here. The second is the budget that we're proposing. And you can see from the numbers in the light green box, we think there's about $1.1 million that can be reclaimed for other projects from the B3, B4 project. And hang on just a second, let me get it to move down here. We think there's about, oh yes, we think there's about $3 million that can be recouped from the South Site project due to some, that coming in a little, they were coming in a little better than they thought, so.
Okay, so this is regarding the former Venico oil site that is down at bordering Olympic Boulevard. So currently, the contractor that was out there has demobilized from the site. We did, we proposed and worked that out as a cost savings for the district. There is some additional work there. You can see in those bottom two photos where that red brick wall is, that there is a new retaining wall that has to go through in that location as part of the new athletic fields that are going to be installed. Currently, there is not a contract in place for that work. And so it did not make sense for the current contractor for the Venico site to continue demoing that out when there's nothing to go back in its place. So we asked them to demobilize from the site for the time being until we can procure a contract for that work. And so we are currently working on procuring a contract. We are looking at some value engineering options. We actually have a meeting set up next week with the environmental consultants for this area to see what we can do to get some really good value engineering and cost savings for the, for the site. So we may not have to do as much work as originally anticipated while still maintaining a good, safe site for the future. And then last thing is ARB, who was the contractor out there. They had some site rentals such as rumble plates, you know, things like that, that they had in their contract. We pulled those out of their contract and the district is now taking care of those directly. And that actually saves a little bit of markup and overhead that the contractor otherwise would have put on, on a monthly basis. And so you're just saving a couple hundred bucks, you know, a couple hundred bucks here and there, but it adds up over the next few months when the contractor is no longer on site.
And the same chart that we're familiar with now, with the original budget, the current budget, and a little over a million dollars that we think can be recouped from this project to help out with other projects.
So this is very similar, what we, similar format to what we saw for El Rodeo. The top line there you can see is for B3, B4. Currently, we are looking at a current completion date of June 30th, 2025. For the Amendment 8 project, which is a work that's along Heath Road, we currently have a current completion date of October 31st. And that is looking like we are going to be meeting that date. For the Venico oil wells, originally, they were supposed to be completed in the month of September. And because of their demobilization and the work of retaining wall number five, we actually extended their contract to September of next year. And that's going to allow them to, if they need to come back out and do continuous work, there's not going to have to be any further change orders or things like that when they come back out.
And so just real quick here, again, I think that one of the takeaways here as far as the major projects, right, of El Rodeo, the dates that we see and the B3, B4, I think those are things to highlight on the schedule. And it's, and I'm thankful for the work from Fonder Solari as well as our Pro West team in regards to just collaborating and making sure that we are looking at these schedules and that those dates are realistic dates. And so just wanted to reemphasize that it looks like these are all on track. And we're happy to see that collaboration continue between all of us. And this structure is helping us to work together and maintain those things. And I think, I mean, we'll talk a little bit about that here in the next few slides.
And I just want to add about the schedule again. B3, B4 are a lot more complicated as far as the structural concerns compared to El Rodeo. There are still unresolved issues that may impact the schedule further as we move forward. But we are assessing, we are working with the contractor to see if we can find a creative way to eliminate impacts. But there may be impacts that we are going to, again, as we move forward, we are going to report to you on future updates.
And as far as the, these photographs we have here in the top left, this is one of the many concrete pores that we had out on site. They were in the process, in this photo, of doing some concrete pores up on the roof. In the lower, I'm sorry, that's the top left, in the lower left, this is your B3 lobby, getting the metal stud framing in place. Upper right, this is your music room. This is the most complete room in the entire building because it is mostly isolated onto itself. We are able to progress very rapidly and get this room completed. And in your lower right, this is just an overview of the exterior of your lobby. And this is what people are going to see as they come up to the building.
Since we are onboard, we also helped with some other old projects that needed our help. And we jumped in and helped the district. Like there are some warranty works and additional improvement outside Beverly Vista Middle School project that we are working with the contractor to manage those. That ADA work is the requirement of the city of Beverly Hills added to the scope of the work. And we are in the final steps of negotiating the cost with the contractor. And also the Bulldog Aid, I think you are going to update about the cost comparison for that.
Yeah, so I'd just like to touch on the Bulldog Aid Wellness Center. Next, at the next boarding, we plan on doing a separate presentation on that to go over the options that are going to be available, a cost, schedule, and all the other impacts that it might have depending on what direction we go. But we're going to save that for the next board meeting.
If you remember, the first time that I spoke to every one of you is just we need to make sure and understand exactly how much the cost for the future projects. And one of the first things that we did is we went through a true and full estimate for the two projects that were already designed and design was complete. One was the retaining wall project that is basically part of infrastructure for building the future projects at high school site. And the other one was building C. These two estimates are already complete. And we are also estimating the, we are going through a true estimate for the South Side Athletic Fields right now. And Kimberly is gonna, sorry, Kimberly is gonna talk about like the project cost and construction cost. So why we have two different numbers. So if what the construction cost basically is the value of the construction contract. So if what the construction cost basically is the value of the construction contract estimated and how we come up with the project cost or final project budget.
This slide makes it spells out exactly what we're talking about here. We've got the project cost on the top. We've got the, excuse me, we've got the construction cost on the very top. That our detailed estimator, our estimator broke down for us how much we think the actual hard cost of the construction is going to be. The rest of the costs in here are the various soft costs that we know come along with this, the inspection, the hazmat, the design, all of this sort of nature thing. And we have the industry standard percentages in here to come up with the total cost of what it will be to do the project at the very bottom of our chart here. And for the retaining walls project, this is a little over twenty million. And for the building C project, I think we're looking about seventy six, yes, seventy six point six million to do the entire thing.
On the program level, again, we heard about uh my colleagues about the activities in the field and but we are running a program here, so there are program activities needed as well. Uh, we, since we are on board, we are helping the district with some procurement activities. The first one that we did, we did an RFPQ for repo graphic services for the bond and construction program. Uh, that uh contract was not uh basically publicly competed for a long time and the actual contract was expired in November twenty twenty. If I, yeah, and uh we, since we are on board now, right now, we have a new contract. We publicly published that and uh compete that contract and we got a new vendor on board. Uh, we are working on two other RFQs, one for architectural services pool for future projects and one for material and a special uh special testing and inspection. And we are in the draft format of that, uh I'm hoping that we in the next couple of weeks with the help of Will and Raphael, we are gonna uh complete those RFQs and uh we are gonna publish them. The main reason for the uh architectural one is that we need to have a master plan or put together a master plan for future projects, not the ones that already designed, but we need to just the board did a great job uh putting together a strategic plan for the future activities of the district. I think the uh construction program needs also have a master plan that align with those strategic plans. And the vehicle for doing that is gonna be the master plan that we are gonna work on that. Uh, we are also helping the or help district with uh bid and procurement for some maintenance projects. Those projects are not bond related. Uh, as uh you remember, like a couple of board meetings ago, you could have approved the contract for the blacktop on the basket park courts at the high school. We helped the district with the with that procurement, the bidding and award uh was handled by Joy. We also helping the maintenance for procuring a contract to fix the uh area, the maintenance yard, there is some uneven areas that uh previously there were some portable classroom there. Those were removed from the site and we are just basically flattening that area uh to bring some of the containers, the storage containers from the high school yard up there, that's gonna open up a little bit of a space for the students as well. We are also working on the new uh what a new uh policy and procedure sets where we call it like program management plan. We are drafting that uh for any future projects and future activities. And we are doing that with the help of Phil and Raphael. Uh, validation and analyzing the existing budgets, that's the work that you saw the result of that on the budget for each one of the projects. Kimberly did a great job on that, uh again, in the short period of time that we were on board. We are also, I'm sure you all saw that, developing and publishing a monthly report. And it's basically different uh level and layers of the reporting. We have cited specific monthly reports and we have program monthly report that uh I'm sure uh the board members have seen that and it's normally our goal is to issue that no later than the ten days of the tenth day of the following months for the previous months. And also, we talked about the estimating the accurate cost for future projects. And I believe that's a key component of planning. And because that helps us to know where we stand and how much money do we need for any of the future projects.
I think on this last slide, one of the points here got cut off, uh there it goes, uh let me go back. All right, so um yeah, sorry, it was cut off that that last point. We are having sk- weekly scheduled progress report meetings. Uh, in these meetings, we're we're appreciative of, you know, Fonda's larger team. Uh, Will is in those meetings, I'm in those meetings and we go over details of what's going on at each one of the sites, each one of the projects. There's constant communication with the di- the district uh making decisions uh i- in regards to what needs to happen going forward on on certain important topics, right? Uh, and so we're very appreciative of that collaboration that we have. And this is a weekly basis where we're constantly looking at just, you know, long term planning. We're looking at short term immediate items that need addressing. You know, uh, we're also looking at 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 the implementation of the strategic plan as far as construction goes. And we talked about, for instance, uh Amin mentioned the master plan. Um, and so we're taking those steps, so um you know, we're looking at that needs assessment which feeds into the master plan. And so all of that's coming together, we're looking at that weekly. So it's it's something that we're paying very close attention to and uh district has a lot of oversight in this matter. So um we're very thankful for for this uh process as well. Uh, but uh for the next slide, uh we um went on a CBOC tour. And so I'll have a Mr. Croft talk about that.
Uh, yeah, so last week we had a a tour scheduled with the uh Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Uh, and I'm in my opinion, it was a very successful tour. Uh, many of you are in this room right now, we're we're part of the tour. But uh uh thanks to uh thankfully for Pro West, they were able to help us set up uh the the reception table for everyone who joined uh the meeting and the tours. And they were equipped with hard hats, vests, safety glasses and uh they ensured we all had the proper footwear and and clothes on for the tour. But um overall, I think we did have a um a good time, it was very informative. Uh, the high school uh tour, which was led by Elliot, um was a very informative, even though it's it's pretty rough in a very rough construction site, but he still successfully led us through and uh and gave us a lot of good information. And then uh from then, from that, we went on to Elrodeo uh where Said helped lead the tour and uh uh presented a lot of information in more on more of the finished areas. And we were able to see what some of these buildings are going to look like and uh and areas especially where they're pretty close to a substantial completion. So uh we feel like it was a pretty successful tour and a a great meeting. Uh, Kimberly?
This page is our summary of everything that's in place right now and all the funds that we think can be recouped from the different projects. At the bottom here, you'll notice there is a total of ninety million, little over ninety million here that um is remaining from bond funds that has not been allocated to any particular budget as yet. In addition to that, we have the three point three million total that we think can be recouped from the other projects to give us ninety four million that is remaining that can be spent. And here we have our summary of all of the projects that the district would like to see coming up. The total of those is about a hundred and ten million. When we take that against the potential funds that we have, we come out about sixteen million dollars shy. However, we do are pretty sure we're going to be eligible for seismic mitigation funds that are coming up at about sixteen point two, which brings us to a total of just about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars shy of being able to do what we have prices for at this moment. Before you get too excited, I have to throw the caveat that this does not include, we're still working on the estimate for the South Side Athletic Fields and we don't have the estimate yet for the oil well area, earthwork and backfill project. So those two costs are also going to be a concern for any work going forward.
Yeah, I wanna elaborate a little bit more on that, like the cost that you see for the South Side Athletic Field is just from an old placeholder number that the architect used to uh submit to DSA for DSA tracker. We are again doing a full estimate on that project to validate that number. Um, so we we are not sure that uh the total project cost is accurate or not. And on the earthwork related to the oil wells and south side, there is a lot of moving parts still that here as are unknown. There are further testing and investigation are in place that we need to have those results and that determine the amount of the soil that needs to be removed and replaced at the site. And also, there are some requirements by AQMD that we are working on that, that the timing of the trucking, that would be a cost factor. So if we cannot do that during the normal workday hours, that would add to the cost of these projects. So we are trying to have the answer to all those questions. And as soon as we have those answers, we are gonna come back to you with a more accurate estimate. So uh again, right now, this is where we stand as far as the program budget with the projects that we have in our hand. But those two red lines are like the defining factor of this. And as soon as we have the answer, those two two costs, we are gonna update the budget and present it to you.
And thank you, Amin, for that clarification. And I want to just reiterate that because I think it's very important that it's clear to understand that the oil wells area, earthwork and backfill, the items in red, the second item in red, that is still under review and we do anticipate that that's going to be very costly. Um, and as Amin mentioned, a lot of this has to do with uh AQMD regulations in regards to when these earthmoving activities can be performed. Um, and so we're working currently uh with environmental audit to try to see if there's a way that we could work through those things because the more restrictive it is, the more expensive it will be. We're talking about uh lots of cubic tons of of dirt that has to be uh removed and things that have to happen. Um, some of this may affect us in regards to schedule. Um, i- i- it for this for the specific item and even the coordination of this. Um, e- essentially, when these moving activities happen, certain things can't happen in the vicinity of it. Uh, to put it in 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 layman's terms, like i- if if something's going on in this section, really, you have to close that section out so that you can make sure that it's it's done correctly during that time period. Um, so there may have involve a situation where it might even morph into, and again, this may, it's I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but this is part of available options that most likely will be presented. But there may be a scenario where, for instance, during the summer, we might have to uh close a certain section of the campus to be able to do this work uh properly and at an accelerated rate. If not, then you're looking at really doing all this earthmoving activities after four thirty and that would be logistically very difficult to do. So that itself is going to be a very important uh challenge for us to really meet. We're looking through what options we have, especially with collaboration with AQMD to make sure that we satisfy those needs. But at the same time, I just want to, you know, put that out there that there may be a scenario where during the summer, we might have to do some activities where certain sections of the campus are closed, like the swim gym and and those areas. So of course, before any of that is decided, we would bring it to our board, uh of course, because it's a very important thing. Community members use that, so it's it's something that we'll have to evaluate. But it may be that that might be the best case scenario uh as we move forward. In regards to the seismic mitigation funding, uh we recently received a fifteen day letter. And so that we understand what that is, it's basically uh it's the OPSC funds. Uh, OPSC approves what's called an unfunded approval of of funds. In regards to this, it's seismic mitigation reimbursement. Um, essentially, what happens is um OPSC issues a letter, we have fifteen days to reply to any clarifying items that OPSC may have so that we don't lose our place online and so that we get placed in what's called an unfunded approval list. And then eventually, if we meet all the requirements that um are being asked of us from from OPSC and and they they find that it's satisfactory, then yes, we're looking at the sixteen point two million. Um, but we're in the process of that, we've already responded to OPSC with within those fifteen days. Uh, so we're, we made it uh in regards to the response. We're waiting for their response and we'll be, there'll be a little bit back and forth here uh for the next few days. Um, and then we will know for certain once it becomes an unfunded approval. But when it becomes unfunded approval, there's still a process for that to become funded. And that might take another, y- I mean, usually it could take anywhere from six to even twelve months for that to actually be funded. Um, which in this schedule, it might not necessarily affect us regarding cash flow. But that's something that we want to start looking at now. Um, cash flow is going to be very important um as we look at things. For instance, if you take away that sixteen point two million, that means that if if we don't receive those funds by twenty twenty five, you might run into an issue if you start doing this other work in regards to cash. Yeah, you might receive the monies in the future, but you have to make sure there's a that we cover that and that we're looking at cash and monitoring cash very closely. Um, so we are definitely looking at these uh and we're hoping, it looks pretty certain that we're going to receive them. Um, but it's still, there's still a little bit of a process left and we will make sure to give an update once we know for certain that OPSC has approved the unfunded approval. And once we go forward, that will help us with this uh with with some of these decision making factors. But again, I do want to reiterate uh that in regards to the oil wells and uh earthwork and the seismic mitigation funding. And as Amin mentioned with the athletic fields, that was more of a y- y- you know, we're we're going to get a better estimate on that and and we'll be able to come forward with something different for that. Um, so we'll go ahead and go on to the next slide um for future updates.
Again, this is just a recap of the projects that we have in our hand currently. Uh, retaining walls, we talked about it. We are looking at creative ways to come up with some value engineering item retaining the regarding the retaining walls, scope and phasing to see what would be the best way of procure and uh put those retaining walls in place. Uh, building C, we talked about it, we did the full estimate, we know how much the value of the construction would be. But uh again, building, building C is contingent to some of the retaining walls and also clear answer about uh some of that earthwork that is being investigated right now. And the South Side Athletic Field, uh right now, the project is submitted to DSA. The architect got some comments back, uh it's under review. And at the same time, we are apparently doing a full estimate based on the DSA submittal to see how much would be the actual value with project.
Challenges?
Thank you, and again, um I think with any bond program escalation is always a challenge. And we want to make sure that we are, you know, looking at our schedule, which is why we mentioned that a little bit earlier. And uh, schedule is very important and we'll consistently be providing updates on schedule. If anything, if we see anything that is going to affect, you know, the estimates of schedule, uh we will make sure to immediately bring that uh to the board and we're, our our goal is to provide these consistent monthly updates and 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 give this transparent information about where we are to ensure that we also uh address issues of escalation. Um, the other challenge that we're looking at is the cost for the oil wells, earthwork and backfill project. Again, that is sort of a wild card right now, um unfortunately. It depends on what happens with AQMD, we're trying to, you know, all different sorts of angles here. Um, so to try to get some sort of relief, um but ultimately, it it's really we're gonna have to comply with whatever e- eventually is decided there and and we'll go that route. But that will be a very important challenge for us to meet head on and um I think we will do that. Approval of seismic mitigation funds is is important. If we take away those sixteen point two million dollars that you saw previously, of course, that would hinder us. But I I do think we're we're on a good path there. We, in our response, we feel pretty confident with our response to OPSC for their fifteen day letter. Um, so we're we're, we worked very closely also with Bill Savage in regards to getting that uh letter to them. And I think we're pretty confident that the answers will be will be meeting their requirements. We're also working on obtaining state modernization funds because because the question is, right? Well, what about if these estimates come out higher? What about if the athletic fields are much more? What if the uh earthmoving activities end up costing twenty, thirty million dollars? What are we gonna do about funding, right? There's different things that we can do. Yeah, you know, currently, we're looking at all of our modernization eligibility. Essentially, this is where we can apply um to the state uh for funds that essentially would be like reimbursements if we've had DSA approved projects that meet the requirements. Uh, when we submit the forms, um we can apply for those modernization funds, modernization eligibility dollars. And so we're hoping to do that with what's remaining now. Um, but in, we're excited to know that in twenty twenty five, um some of those applications that we had back in the nineties will now open up so that we could apply for new uh modernization funds. So for example, at Beverly Hills High School, one of the estimates we received, again, this is an estimate, is that we potentially in twenty twenty five would be able to apply for about seventeen million dollars worth of modernization eligibility. Now, this isn't seismic mitigation funding, it's modernization eligibility. So essentially, the work that we've been doing right now would most likely qualify for us to receive reimbursement, which would then we could take those funds and apply it to a project, which then brings into question that process itself, though, uh modernization, in my experience, it's taken about three years from the date that you from the date that you apply to when you receive the funds. So again, we run into a cash flow issue. We might be able to tap into those dollars, but there may be a a a period in time where we'll have to find some sort of uh bridge for us to be able to continue with the project and then with the understanding that we will receive approvals. Um, now, we want to make sure that we're certain about what we're approving before we commit to something like that, of course. But as we get closer to that, and um if I'm still here, and our team is all still here, uh, which we will be, right? Uh, yes. So um then 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 we will get to that when we get to that. And um, you know, and of course, the phasing for future projects, that's going to be very important. How are we going to like, because a lot of this is is interlocked, and and Amin mentioned that a little earlier, like the retaining wall project's going to interlock with other projects. And so that's going to impact schedule. It may impact uh cost, it may impact that bridge that we might need during that timeframe. Um, but uh definitely, these are, these are challenges. But you know what? We're going to meet them head on. We're gonna make sure we're successful and making sure this program um i- is successful and that our students have the best facilities. That's really our priority. We're all working together because we want to make sure that this gets done, that they have the best athletic fields, that they have a a brand new building C that looks great and everyone's proud of. We are, we are going to do it. We're gonna get it done. Uh, we're going to make sure it's it's done correctly. Um, and uh, we're excited because everything's coming together. I think our structure is working well. I think our partnership with our Pro West team is 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 uh, it's really, really coming uh forward. And and I think we've we've built a lot of good momentum with Fonder Solari and Pro West. And I think that while we have these challenges here in the horizon, I think we're going to be able to meet these head on and be successful in the program. So um in regards to some future activities, uh, Amin?
We briefly talked about master planning. The initial step for master planning is need assessments, facilities need assessment. Uh, we came up with a methodology for that that is presented to the Rafael and Will and they are reviewing that that and we are ready to move forward. Our team is gonna take care of the need assessment and technically, we are gonna visit every building and every facility in the district, come up with a life cycle and what's left from that life cycle, what is the cost if there is any immediate repair, if there is something urgent, if there is something that needs to be done within next five years and so. And basically, not only address the needs, we are gonna come up with a rough order of magnitude cost estimate that what is the cost for those future needs? That's gonna feed a master planning that needs the help of an architect, and we talked about that. And I also touched based on our program management plan and the procedures that we are working on, and I'm hoping that's gonna be done in the very near future. Uh, we're also working with Rafael and uh Will and to come up with the best delivery method for the pure uh future project. And that's basically part of our uh program management plan that what is the procurement and what would be the best delivery method for each one of these future project and how we are gonna move forward contract wise. Um, study eligibility for Calshape, uh, that's another fund that's available, and we are looking into that to see if there is anything yet at the district that we have enough information to submit for that or not. And that's again, that's a very immediate future activity that we are working on. And also, we are constantly looking for any other available state funded programs that we can tap in and basically subsidize the money that we have and make your dollar value going another extra mile.
So so as you can see, we're in regards to this, 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 the budget and and other financing sources, we're very much looking at everything we can. Um, and uh, we're making sure that we could look under every a- any state program that we're eligible for to find additional funds to get these programs completed and uh completed on time. That's really the the main objective here. Um, uh, Will, do you have any other closing comments?
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to, once again, thanks, thank Fonder Solari for putting this presentation together and for everyone who contributed. And uh, as Rafael and Amin mentioned, we'll be doing many more of these presentations in the future. And uh, you know, we're going to try to continue to provide as much info as we can and be as transparent as we can on all the construction projects and uh yeah, I think that's it. So thank you all.
Okay, well, Mr. Karat, thank you. Uh, Mr. Guzman, thank you. Mr. Solari. Um, our entire Fonder Solari team, thank you. Um, and as our current practice, we always uh will have our Board of Education members uh begin with asking um questions that they have. Uh, for people in the audience, um, if you do have a question that was not answered, uh, please go to bhusd forward slash build, B U I L D, forward slash, put your question in there. Um, if it hasn't been answered, and then after board questions, um, we'll we'll begin some of those questions. Um, if you've already done that, I have a lot of those, if you've done those, so um I'll be able to call on you. President Wells?
Thank you so much, all of you, for being here today. Can you hear me? I feel my microphone's a little off. Um, I really appreciate all the work that you've done for the short amount of time that you've been here. It's so comprehensive. I appreciate you being in an open forum like this when uh you're just still so new. I think that's uh very vulnerable, and I appreciate you partnering with us because we really want to have transparency and and I, part of the reason that I think all of us felt really great about bringing you on board is because you have the same philosophy, and it's really obvious by your presentation. I don't think we've ever seen this much information presented to us in such a clear and transparent way. So thank you all very much. I'm really appreciative. Um, I'm gonna go around and let everybody ask their questions and then try and keep it as more of a discussion dialogue, like a study session. Um, I I also really appreciate the savings that you're finding and uh your ability to be looking for dollars and that you are able to put together um as much of this presentation as you can, when I know that when you came in, all the information was not readily available, and you really had to dig to find that information and cajole to get information. And I appreciate you building a partnership and your approach to be uh walking into this this situation and building a team. And it's really evidenced by what we've been seeing so far. And we can see it today. And I just really look forward to more of these meetings because I know that uh the the community is going to get their questions answered as well as we, and it will build trust in our program. So first, I'll start with Alex. Thank you.
I have no additional questions, but thank you so much for the presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. I have some general comments and then just a couple of specific comments. Well, first of all, I really feel like that I am beginning to get a handle at this point where we are in the program. It's the first time I've ever felt so comfortable knowing that at least I feel I know where I am, and I really appreciate that information today. Um, there was a lot to digest, but I think that I was able to get most of it. And also, the presentation was clear. It was very easy to understand. And uh, I was particularly interested, the optimism that I felt, but I really felt a lot of optimism at the end when you talked about the modernization program that we can collect money from the nineteen nineties, way back when, that unfortunately will take a lot of time, but we may be able to recoup some money from that. And that made me feel very, very, I was always talking about, well, being creative in funding. And this is the first basic thing that I've heard where there might be some chance to get some substantial funds from what went on before. Um, I have a few questions, uh, which I'm gonna pass quickly because I know my colleagues also have a lot of questions and comments. Um, the the question that I have is that the number five wall and that picture of the oil well that's there, that dirt that was in that, is that dirt that's just been replaced? Or is that the dirt that's gotta be removed at this point? I I saw that dirt in the hole and I wondered about that.
Yeah, there was some earthwork in that area, and eventually, when you build all this construction is done, your finished surface is gonna be a lot higher than what you're seeing. One of the reasons that this retaining wall number five is gonna be built because the finished floor is gonna be a lot higher than the existing brick wall that you have there. So when we are done with all the earthwork, all of that, it, basically, the finished surface is gonna be even higher than top of that soil that you have over there.
All right, that's what I, and so we're waiting on that. And now, the question going back to Elrodeao, of course, you know that that's a big place in my heart, that dome. It's going to look pretty much like it did in the past, as I recall, as that
It's gonna look exactly like it was, otherwise, we are gonna be in trouble.
That was a big headache. I know that that caused a lot of problem. And I think you pretty well answered. My question was, how much do we think we'll have left in the pot at the end of ER and B three and B four? And I really felt, not that I'm happy with it, but that it's a lot better than I thought it was going to be. Uh, but we still have a problem. Uh, how much longer or how many more do you think um we have to wait for Department of uh Architecture from the state for approval of plans? I mean, how many plans do we? And are we gonna be submitting more plans to them and waiting for them to come back to us? I know you mentioned one.
Right now, it's only the athletic field that's being reviewed by DSA. Um, nobody can predict like real timeline for DSA, but I can tell you that in general, they are doing a really better job on review time. So it's the project that size, I'm gonna say is gonna take maybe about eight to twelve months to get the final approval.
And the oil well that goes in the middle of all that is part and parcel of that, or is that have any effect on that?
Yes, it does for the start of construction, but DSA doesn't have any jurisdiction over oil wells. DSA only reviews the basically construction projects. That's, there are other state agency that have jurisdiction over oil well and environmental issues.
Okay. Oh, one more little quick question. I noticed that you are estimating savings here and there. Can you give us some idea why you're being to make those savings? What's happening there that is allowing us to make those savings?
It's a lot of that is the way that they allocated funds is like that. And part of that is, again, we touch base on this industry standard for percentages for uh soft costs. So again, there had some contingencies here and there, and we just allocate them and we came up, okay, do we really need that much of money to be funded here or basically budgeted here? These, we are not cutting anything from any of the existing contracts. These are just budgetary numbers that were in the budget. We are just shuffling those numbers around the the way that we think is more realistic.
Well, maybe you'll find some more.
Hopefully.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for the presentation.
Of course.
Uh, but thank you so much to the team. I, we only have about twenty minutes here, so I'll just quickly say that I I I know this team um didn't inherit, you know, super clean books. Things weren't left in a super transparent way. So I really appreciate how this team has come on. I asked specifically that within, you know, a couple of months, we're sitting here and we're getting a really clear understanding of where we are, what the numbers are. You know, how much, how much is, uh, how much do we have left to allocate? And, you know, I I feel like we're we're actually getting that here. So I really, really appreciate um the work that's been done. So um, thank you. Um, looking forward, a a couple of questions. I'm looking specifically at page twenty-two, if we can just bring that back up. Um, it's kind of a, I think, a summary of the budget. So when we say current budget, just to be clear, this is, this is how things were left or what the outlook was when you guys came on board, right? These are not the original budgets that we had set for these projects, which I'm sure were far less than these, given what we know to be over budget and delayed. Um, so the, so the delta here is what I think you just explained to Mrs. Marcus, but I just wanted to make sure we had contingencies built in to those budgets. So we're going through, we're looking at those contingencies and seeing what is realistic in terms of what we think we need to spend with where we are and where we don't think we need to spend those. Now, we're we're putting that in the projected budget, right? So we're not cutting any scope. Okay. Next question, just to be very clear for uh for the sake of the community, the projects that we have here, high school B three, B four, south side, Elrodeao, Venico, these are the projects that are currently in scope, that we've put budget aside for already. On the, on the following page, page twenty-three, building C, the athletic fields, the retaining walls, we're, we've, we have a separate um, looks like an update here on Conheim. These are all things that we have not put budget against, right? So when we say that there's ninety-four million roughly of potential funds, that's after we've spent on things that are currently in scope. Ninety-four is what's left. So we can start making a decision on, you know, how we spend the ninety-four million that we believe that we're gonna have left. I have more questions, but I want to be, we only have about eighteen minutes, so let me, let me, let me let my other colleagues start going and then maybe we'll just have a free flowing of a discussion. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Um, I I also found it very clear. I really am happy also with the rearrangement of the structure. Um, it feels very refreshing to have Mr. Karat. Um, Karat, sorry, Karat. Um, and and the the bond program, um, it feels like there's many layers of interpretation, of knowledge base, everything. I really like that. Um, I was happy to go on the tour, um, that you showed some of the pictures um last Wednesday. Um, Elrodeo to me looked um quite amazing, I have to say. I mean, it's really coming along. I can really see how some areas were really preserved in keeping with the historical mandates. Um, you know, the the one larger kind of concern I have is is the B three, B four. Um, it looks and seems and is, you know, pretty complex. So when you discuss, you know, the possible impact considering numerous unforeseen conditions uh requiring design revisions, can you share any that you so far or that you are currently uh dealing with?
Yeah, well, we'll let Elliot touch on that since he's
Elliot is the engineer, correct?
Oh, he's the project manager.
Yeah, so realistically, one of the biggest things we've got right now, um, and this is kind of what we touched a little bit on during our site walk as well, is the foundations of these buildings. There were never, these buildings were built in the late twenties, and they kind of progressed through. And the as-built drawings, meaning what was what was in place when these buildings were finally built are very poor. And a lot of them were just, um, I've, we also learned were destroyed in a fire or a flood. I've heard differing opinion or um perspectives on what it was, but a lot of these documents were destroyed at a period at a uh point in time in the past. So we don't, we don't know a lot of what's there and what's underground. Um, so that requires a lot of extra digging and investigation in order to figure out what's there. There's one area where the plant, the plans we do have show that these footings were five, six feet underground. Contractor started digging, digging, hit six feet, nothing was there, seven feet, nothing. Twenty feet later, they finally found the footing as to where it was supposed to be, and it was a different size than what the plans are showing. So consequently, we are having to do a lot of extra digging just to expose these footings. And the uh design structural engineer has to go back, re-engineer the size of these footings in order to make it the size the way it needs to be. And unfortunately for the contractor, that's just a lot of extra work that they didn't know because it was shown one way on the plans, but in reality, it was very different.
Right. So there's, there's a differential also, not only in money and budgetary constraints, but um time. I mean, there could, something else could be revealed that could be
Exactly. And I just want to add a little bit is the problem is not resolving the moment that the structural engineer does the cacs. Right after that, you need to submit these revisions to the Division of the State Architect, wait for their approval, get their approval. And technically, they cannot do any work unless you get the approval of the division, uh, the Division of the State Architect, DSA, for any of these changes. So all of these add us to the challenges, like, because if they cannot start on this one, that has like impacts the sequencing of the following activities. So what's gonna happen here? And um, for example, if they have a concrete crew that wants to fork on this foundation and they want to continuously work on the rest of the foundation, now you have to segregate this, now you have to remobilize, demobilize. So a lot of little things happening till you get that approval for this. And uh contractor is very cooperative on those areas. Some of them, again, we creatively find a way to resequence and dated even before we came on board, and they just keep the uh flow running. But again, there are hurdles that's happening. And as Elliot mentioned, uh mainly is because of there was no as-built records or clear as-built records of how that they made a lot of assumptions when they were designing the project. And a lot of that was deviating when they went actually in the field and started.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, uh, team. Um, a couple of quick questions. Try to move it along. When you talk about amendment eight, you're talking about the utility trenches? Okay. Um, the oil wells and area and earthwork and backfill, are you, uh, those refer to the legacy wells?
The It's basically the, mainly the whole side side. Legacy well is part of it, also the all, the whole earthwork around the fields.
The upper fields.
The upper fields.
Right. Right.
And also around Venico site that is still some, uh,
Right, that, that I understood because we, we pulled off and there was an existing contract for some of that work at the Venico site that we're still, I guess we're still um, waiting on. Does it cost money to remobilize if we demobilize, if we had ARB demobilize?
There was very little cost that was presented to the board, I think, last month and was approved. I, Elliot, how much was? About twenty thousand dollar only.
Okay, so the savings in, in demobilizing far outs, okay. And as far as scope and phasing as for the retaining walls and Building C, all, all four retaining walls have to be completed before we can build Building C, correct?
Um, not retaining wall number five. Uh, that has nothing to do with C because that's on the side side of, but the two big ones, I think.
But be good, but I, I believe we start, we have to start at five though and come north, correct?
We are looking into that phasing.
Okay.
But I, I don't think necessarily you have to do it in that order.
Okay, cuz looking at the bond program budget, it would seem to me that based on escalation and material costs that you guys have discussed and has been a big thorn in the side of construction period, um, it would behoove us to move towards starting Building C as soon as possible to get in that direction. Um, so is, are you guys looking into that?
Yes, that's, that's our next step. Now that we know how much exactly would be the cost for this, that's basically our immediate action to start phasing. But we need to resolve some unknowns and we also working, as Elliot mentioned, with the other consultants, the environmental and the oil consultant of the district to make, uh, there may, there may be a possibility that we have more saving on retaining wall number five with saving some of the structure in place and backfill against it rather than demoing the whole that. I'm talking about Venico site.
Right.
So, we are looking to that and as soon as we have a meeting scheduled on Monday, as soon as I have, we had the answer to those questions, we are gonna just re-strategize about the building, the retaining wall and Building C and move forward.
Because based on your budget with the estimate in uh, the South Side field work still being a question mark, we don't have finalized approved plans from DSA anyway, so we really can't go out to bid that. Um, we definitely can, within the parameters that you've presented, be able to continue with the retaining walls and um, Building C under our current budget, a lot of a budget, so I, I.
We, again, there, there is a contingent, part of that is contingent to the air, earthwork as well. So, we need to have the answers for those investigation because some of these retaining wall also need uh, oil, sorry, uh, soil to be deported, uh, exported from the site.
Understood.
And that also, we still are not clear about that AQMD issues. And we are trying to resolve, resolve all of that because that may have more cost impact as well.
Right, my thought is that if we take the South Side Athletic Field project off the table completely for now, um, we, we might have room um, for whatever the earthwork comes back at, the retaining walls and Building C within our current budget.
Yeah, that's a possibility.
That's what I'm looking at. Alright, thank you.
Can I just, uh, can I just ask one question, uh, to just, to just, but double click on something that Noah just said with respect to the escalations. I remember when we were looking at current budget when um, TCDS was here, before you guys were. Some escalation was built in at that time. There was some expectation that there was gonna be escalation. However, now as we're sitting here today, um, I think since that time, we've seen some of the cost of construction come down a little bit. We have, um, you know, the cost of containers I know have gone down, that, you know, some construction in other places are slowing down. I've heard that some subs, you know, are starting to be more realistic with what they, so, so how do we think about, you know, but escalation? Um, when you put that as a warning, but the, you know, it give us a sense of where things are and you think that things are going over the next.
General rule of thumb, unless a recession happens, cost of construction never goes down in, like, again, unless there is some economic catastrophe. Considering the uh, cost of uh, fuel and transportation, that would a huge concern right now. Yes, you're right. It's, I'm, I'm, especially on the public side, I'm gonna, not gonna say the cost went down. It's flattened a little bit. But uh, based on the forecast that we see, it's still, there is a chance of escalation as we are moving forward. And our estimators has a formula and considering esca- economic forecast when they calculate it. So, it, that's, there is already a built-in escalation inside of that estimate that you have in front of you. But uh, I personally don't think that the cost is gonna start going down.
So, when, for example, you say of a Building C, seventy-six, of a seventy-seven million, that, that's expecting that we're starting that relatively soon, to Noah's.
Um, I, I can get back to you on that, but I can tell you exactly what assumption was as far as the start date. And we get, normally we calculate that based on the midpoint of construction. So, based on the duration, they consider the midpoint and escalation factor is gonna be multiplied based on that duration. But I can get back to you. I, uh, I don't have a hard copy printed, but I can tell you what exact day we anticipated for the start date on that budget.
Thank you. Thanks, man.
Sure. Um, well, I just wanna say thank you again. I um, I did wanna clarify one thing for the public because I know uh, many parents, they speak about, when is the high school going to be finished? And as you, if you could go back to your first map, um, that you put up, Will, I think it's really beneficial just to um, see that one more time and that is for the high school. Yes. So, I, I, when people think about the high school, uh, I think what they need to understand is that, you know, behind B three, B one, B two, B three and B four, uh, where all of the classrooms are, that those are not, we're not, any, there's no plans currently for those to be uh, modernized any further than they've been so far. And that's in, in addition to the building that we're in right now. So, when we talk about B three and B four being completed, we're talking about the theater and, and salter. And so, I just want people to understand that that, that's, those are the, really the performing arts and music and there's some, I believe there's some offices in there as we see on the the layouts that you showed, but, but that's what we're talking about being completed. And then, uh, what then uh, would be completed, either started before or uh, afterwards, depending on how you, um, what you propose in terms of the sequencing and how we move forward. It's the new gym, which people always refer to as Building C, and I don't think people understand that Building C is a gym. And so, that's the new building, Building C is the gym. And that once that is built, then the co- the old gym, Conheim would come down and the athletic, all the athletic fields, which we're calling the South Side area would be completed. Um, and that's, just so that everybody is clear on what we're looking at when we talk about the high school, I think that's really important. And because it's five to five and we want to start our meeting at five, I'm gonna um, move to any questions that, uh, maybe we can get at least one or two question in from the public so that we can still keep this an open meeting. Uh, because I do think it's just so important. I'm really uh, thankful to all of you for uh, being willing to have this study session, to have us record it, to have it open to the public and to have public ask questions. I know we had many questions come in uh, from the public before this uh, presentation today and I believe many of those questions were already answered in your presentation. So, maybe Dr. Brighi, you can pick some questions that were not answered that we can put in here. At least one or two, because we really do wanna finish at five.
We do have um, two people that submitted questions, so Ms. Tristan Walker Schuman, if you would like to come up, um, and certainly to ask a question that you have that was not answered by the presentation. I know there's one here about Sandy Pringle.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting to be able to speak today or ask a question. Um, the question I had about Sandy Pringle was, what are the savings that were captured? Since we made our change and our comparison to having one uh, inspector versus the two and a half uh, full-time inspectors that we have now. Um, and then, uh, I also had a question. Um, Building C, the athletic building that we're talking about, that's already been approved by DSA, correct? So, the only thing that we're really waiting on is for us to make a decision on the timing to begin, right?
And there's other site factors involved, like the soils on the south field and.
It would be great if you were at the, at the microphone.
There's other factors as well as the site conditions and um, also phasing this, a ramp that cuts through the center of campus as well. So, there's other things besides just the, the phasing or the scheduling.
But, but Building C has already approvals from DSA?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, and so, did you, did someone wanna answer about Sandy Pringle?
Uh, I did see that question ahead of time and I just did a, a quick look. Um, just based on billing rates, I noticed that uh, the Sandy Pringle rates are about half of what the previous inspector was billing. Uh, so that's just one aspect, but I didn't go through and check the uh, actuals and to see how many hours were billed versus how many are being billed now. So, just right off the top level, I just saw the difference in the billing rate.
Alright, okay. So, that, that actually was known.
I, I'm sorry Tristan, I, I think I'm gonna stop you so we can ask, have, let someone else ask a question since you asked two questions. Thank you.
Um, and Ms. Dotis, are you here in the audience? She just walked out.
Okay, um, with that then, I'm going to uh, end our study session, which will give us, did you wanna make a last minute comment, Raphael?
Yes, uh, the Conheim building update, but we could do that at another time.
I'm so sorry we missed that.
We have sort of next, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we'll schedule that and we will let the, the public know when we'll have the Conheim update. I can just certainly say that um, Raphael and Will and the team have been work, looking at Conheim and how we can um, improve Conheim uh, during this time while we're still using it so that the students that are in school now uh, can have the best experience possible uh, under the conditions instead of just letting Conheim uh, stay in the state that it is in and wait until we have the new Building C. So, we're, uh, I just want the public to know we are working on it and they have a plan in place to present on how we can refresh Conheim in the interim. Is there anything else you guys would like to add before we end the study session? I just wanna say thank you again.
Thank you for having us and allowing us to provide.
It's really, I really appreciate all of the hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.